And I'll call this meeting to order. Can we all rise for the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, made divisible with liberty and justice for all.
And will we all remain standing for a moment of silence for all those in harm's way and for all of our military at home and abroad? Thank you. We can all be seated. This statement of advanced notice, the notice requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act of the State of New Jersey have been satisfied by the inclusion of the date, time, and place of this meeting in the notice of regular meetings adopted by this board on January 6, 2025. Such schedule and notice of meetings is posted at the municipal building, the Mount Olive Library, the Board of Education offices, and the six schools was submitted to the Daily Record for Publication on January 7, 2025, and was filed with the Clerk of Mount Olive Township on January 8, 2025. I direct that this announcement be entered into the minutes of this meeting. And we'll take a roll call, please.
Mrs. Aquino?
Here.
Mrs. Fenn?
Here.
Mrs. Figuera?
Here.
Mrs. Fitzgerald?
Dr. Giordano?
Here.
Mrs. Melendez?
Here.
Mrs. Narcisse?
Here.
Mrs. O'Neil?
Here.
Mr. Orzillo?
Here.
And with that, we will take an approval of the minutes. Can I get a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Over to Ms. Fenn. Thank you.
I'll make that motion 2.1 to 2.2.
Second.
And are there any comments or questions from the board for approval of the minutes? Nope, seeing none, we'll take a roll call.
Mrs. Fenn?
Yes.
Dr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mrs. Aquino?
Yes.
Mrs. Figuera?
Yes.
Mrs. Melendez?
Abstain?
Mrs. Narcisse?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Neil?
Yes.
Mr. Orzillo?
Yes.
And with that, we're actually going to move the order of our meeting and move the confidential session to after our reports and discussions. And with that, are there any communications or petitions? Nope, seeing none, and we will move on to our superintendent's report.
Good evening. At this point, I would like to invite Dr. Regan, our acting assistant superintendent, who will be presenting on student achievement assessments from the spring of 2025, NJSLA, Access for Ls, and the DLM.
Thank you. Good evening. Tonight, I'll be presenting on the Spring 2025 NJSLA Access and DLM results. I promise you, we can get through this in 10 minutes. This presentation will be posted on the district website tomorrow morning. This annual presentation is required by the New Jersey Department of Education, and it will be checked during state monitoring. The state provides a reporting template, and we've used that template for the purpose of this presentation. Excuse me. Some slides present the same data in different formats. I will address the data presented in the table format and skip through the slides with the bar graphs because that would be redundant if we did so. So the information is there, but we'll skip through those bar graphs. The first three slides address student participation in the NJSLA testing, and the participation was very good on all three assessments. We will start with the Language Arts Literacy results, and please note that the yellow highlighting designates significant progress for the New Jersey Department of Education. They look at 2% and above as significant and something to celebrate because it's forward motion. We want to see levels 1 through 3 move in a negative direction, and levels 4 and 5, which is meeting and exceeding proficiency, move in a positive direction. Grades 3 through 5 are trending in a positive direction in our Language Arts Literacy results. Grades 6 through 9 are demonstrating inconsistent performance, and these are grade levels requiring focus and improvement, and they are getting that kind of focus and improvement this year. The interventions that are in progress, K-12, they've updated their curriculum, and it's aligned with the revised standards. K-12 professional development on the new curriculum, new programs, and analyzing data is another intervention. Our K-5 new comprehensive benchmark literacy program includes best practice strategies, phonics, academic vocabulary, integration of science and social studies topics, word study, and writing. The middle school and high school revised their curriculum. That, too, is aligned with the revised standards. And writing rubrics were developed to better assess and provide focused instruction on writing in our Language Arts, Social Studies, and Science classes. Moving on to math, grades 3 through 7 are showing a positive trend in student achievement. High school Algebra I and Geometry require focus for improvement. Algebra II, we are observing a strong positive trend in student performance. Interventions being implemented include revised K-12 curriculum with a focus on updated standards and best practice instructional strategies. Our K-12 teachers have been participating in CONCER math professional development, including best practice instructional strategies and analyzing data. Okay, moving on to science, we see positive performance trend. Interventions, we continue to introduce and reinforce mathematics to support understanding and facilitate cross-curricular applications and connections. Whoops, excuse me. Here we go. Again, I'm skipping past the bar graphs. And here are our science interventions, integration of science topics. In literacy, there's a real emphasis on academic vocabulary, and you'll see later on in this presentation the importance that across the curriculum, we really have to focus on academic vocabulary, especially for our multilingual learners. In grades 6 through 12, we are using mathematics. We're incorporating, we're collaborating with the math department, and making sure that mathematics supports scientific concepts and applications, and also implementing cognitive interest cues to increase student engagement. Some of this is like phenomena, interesting puzzling questions that we pose to students, et cetera. So now we will take a look at some of our demographics. We continue to see trends not only in Mount Olive, but very similar to what we're seeing nationally in terms of race. We continue to monitor and address below proficiency performance for our Black and Hispanic students. You'll see that Language Arts, Math, I have an arrow where we're really needing to focus, and Science. Okay, in terms of gender, we are seeing that females are scoring higher in Language Arts Literacy. There appears to be a leveling, a leveling of performance in Math and Science, although more males are scoring at the exceeding proficiency level. Okay, now we're looking at our... Yeah, okay, our special programs. So in Language Arts Literacy, our English language learners, a high percentage of students are not meeting proficiency expectations. What's interesting is if you take a look at our students with 504 plans, they are meeting proficiency, and it could be that the designated accommodations that are being written into their 504 plans are making a difference. Okay, our multilingual learners and our students with IEPs are not meeting proficiency in Math, and that's the same holds true for Science. Science, as we looked at this with the Curriculum and Technology Committee, Science, we had a discussion, really stood out. And again, I'm really thinking that the academic vocabulary is really important here. Science probably has the most technical vocabulary, and our supervisor who oversees the ESL program is collaborating with his colleagues, his supervisors, and we're all watching that. We're really making a conscious effort to build in academic vocabulary, direct teaching throughout the curriculum. Okay, this brings us to the access results. And, you know, probably what stands out here is, ah, we don't have a whole lot of, we don't have, we hardly have any students in Level 5 and 6, but I will tell you, having overseen ESL for many, many years, this is actually something to really applaud because what this is saying is students that are really in the bridging and reaching, I always worry that we hold our multilingual learners in programs too long, and this is saying that there's some good decision-making in terms of getting students back out into the general ed classroom. There is careful monitoring of the students once they exit, but it, you know, if you have a lot of students in Level 5 and 6, I worry that we're holding, we're holding on to them. Okay, so, moving on, let's see, this is, oh, I'm going in the wrong direction. Sorry about that. Okay, some of the interventions, access proficiency levels, we're aligning them in terms of instructional priorities and student groupings. Interventions were emphasizing, as I said, academic vocabulary, continued focus on listening, speaking, reading, and writing, and aligning instruction with WITAS standards, but there's also an emphasis of also including our New Jersey Student Learning Standards because that makes for an easier transition for these students back into general ed classrooms. DLM are Dynamic Learning Maps. These are assessments for our students with the most significant disabilities. The four performance levels are emerging, approaching, at target, and advanced understanding. We had about 35 students that were assessed under this program. Again, there's not something global that I can share with you because progress really is determined based on each student's IEP. So we're looking at performance here against each individual IEP goals and objectives. And finally, we are looking at advanced placement. I think that you looked at these previously.
We did, yeah.
So I'm going to be real quick. These are great results, having been in other districts, high-performing districts. This is something to celebrate and be proud of. 856 tests were administered, over 31 courses, with an average of about 3.5 performance, and 79% of the students scored 3 or higher. That's something to celebrate. So that said, that concludes our assessment presentation. I hope I was able to accomplish it in 10 minutes. Thank you for your interest in the topic, and I'm here to answer any questions if anybody has any questions.
Do we have any questions, comments from the board members?
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Dr. Bangia, any added, anything added for that?
I think at this point, I think we've talked about the state assessment so often. You know, as a district, we look at the whole child. Like, I'm really proud of the fact that we have a data-informed outlook, so it certainly does guide our curricular expectations set for that grade level or that department, but we take into consideration a lot of pieces of information to paint a picture of an individual child. So I think that's really key, and certainly, you know, while we have certain areas of growth that we need to do, we're always focused upon how are we going to transition and translate that to success beyond that classroom. So that's why a lot of those interventions are not necessarily, you know, can they get from one grade level to the next, but what are things that's going to make them successful individuals? And one of those, Ms. Dr. Regan pointed out, is academic vocabulary. It's really critical for them to have a basic understanding of that, as well as ensuring that what's being taught in one building is being taught in another, and I think that's really the work that has been done this summer, especially from an elementary standpoint, and certainly with the supervisors across the K-12 spectrum.
Thank you. Anyone else? Oh, thank you.
I just want to let know our buildings are ready to go for tomorrow, so there's no question. School's going to be open.
And with that, we'll continue through our reports and discussion, and then we'll go into closed session after. So with that, I will move to Personnel Committee report.
Got it. Okay, we met on the 7th of this month. All were in attendance. We talked about district hiring and vacancy updates. We are in need of two positions, tenure track positions, one's an elementary special ed position, and the other is an elementary PE position. All openings are updated daily in Apple Track, and potential applicants are encouraged to frequently visit the district's website in order to see open positions. We also discussed supervisor search updates. The committee was updated on the status of the open supervisor positions in the district. A posting for an interim science supervisor is active and is currently taking place, and I believe that's, I'm misspeaking now, is that right, Dr. Bangia?
Yes. So we're in the process of hiring our special ed supervisors, and as you can see from the board agenda, we did find an interim science supervisor, so we're very fortunate for that.
Good. Then we have a keen university paraprofessional opportunities. We're looking into engaging with several New Jersey universities to explore partnerships, partnership possibilities that would offer pathways to teacher certification for our district's paraprofessionals. The district continues to search for ways to incentivize potential candidates to join our paraprofessional teams. And then we also had our paraprofessional open house. We hosted two separate open house opportunities at the board office this past week, specifically targeting candidates for several current paraprofessional openings in many of our district schools. They're also encouraged to visit our websites and apply through Apple Track. And then we had some confidential things, and that was it.
Thank you. Do we have any comments or questions from board members? No? Okay, seeing none, we'll move to our Finance Committee, and I think Mr. Orzillo, you're up today, right?
Yes. We met on the 7th also. It was a very long meeting, so I'll try to keep this short and sweet. Some of the things that we were discussing, the direct install project for the HVAC at Sandshores underway, so far, so good. The middle school HVAC project is finishing up. The parking lot expansion at the middle school is done, if I'm correct, and we're at CMS right now. What else we got here? I think that's really all I'm going to talk about, because everything else is on the, the minutes is online, but those are some of the cool things that are going on. Oh, also, where you're going to fix the roof over the cafeteria.
At the high school, yep. That's the plan?
And Ms. Shonig, correct me if I'm wrong, the boilers at high school don't need to be replaced, so that...
Correct.
We found how much money now that we can spend?
320.
On more roofs that are in desperate need of being fixed, so that's about it.
I have a question. The parking lot, was that done in-house, or did we contract out for that?
No, we contracted that.
Thank you. That was it.
Any other questions from board members? No? Okay, we will move on then to Curriculum and Instruction Committee.
We met on Monday, October 6, in Dr. Bangia's office. All members were present. Dr. Bangia discussed the kindergarten survey that's going to be shared with our kindergarten parents that allows schools to have an understanding of the educational experiences of their child prior to kindergarten. Dr. Regan reviewed new curricular updates that include elementary dance and theater arts. She also reviewed the state assessment results from the spring of 2025 with us. Dr. Bangia reviewed the expectations of the HIBB self-assessment that will be formally presented at the October 27 board meeting. We also discussed the importance of expanding our dual enrollment options at the high school. Dr. Bangia shared that the high school is in the process of working on their program of studies and will ensure dual enrollment is a part of the conversation as the program of studies is developed. Dr. Bangia also reviewed the technology report that was developed by Dr. Kreider. The technology department is hard at work preparing for fall testing. Our last topic of discussion was CUSAC. Dr. Bangia and Dr. Regan discussed the district's progress in preparing for the instructional and programming portion of CUSAC monitoring, and we are in very good shape, should be in very good shape, meeting the expectations of the state.
Any comments or questions from the board?
Madam President, I have...
Yeah?
I'm glad to see the committee is looking at our dual enrollment. That's something I know the board has been, you know, pushing for its past couple of years. I'd like everyone to keep in mind, though, too, as a committee, Beth, that, going back to Dr. Regan, the reason why our AP, we offer a lot of AP tests is because the student pays for the first one, and the board picks up the tab for everyone after that. So one of the things the committee could think about is if it's a detriment for the cost, the board would, if the student pays half, the board could kick in the other half, whatever that is, that's something to think about. So it's not, doesn't become a roadblock. Because I do believe dual enrollment is just as important as AP tests for students.
How much does a test cost?
AP test? What is an AP test? Eighty...
It's about 80 dollars.
About 80 some dollars, and then we pick up the rest. So if you pay the first one, and you want to take another three, we pay it off.
Are we, we're paying the additional, or are you paying just one?
We just, we just pay for the first test. Every test after that, it's all...
Sorry, that's all right. We pay for the first test, and then when you want to take after, you have to pay for, I'm sorry, Mark. But it's a substantial cost, think about it.
I mean, we had 856 tests, so... But I agree, I was actually very grateful to hear added interest or exploration to dual enrollment.
Any other questions from the board? Nope? Okay, we'll move to Policy and Governance Committee. Ms. Melendez?
Yes. The committee met on October 6. All members were present, and we have a guest, Mr. Feldman, Ms. Cook. The Policy Committee review proposed policy regulations updates to areas impacting high school graduation requirements, outside activities, and proposals for curriculum activities. These policies will be finalized at the later date. Revised Policy 8500, food services, and Policy 5516, use of electronic communication devices, were finalized and placed on the agenda for board approval. Mr. Feldman and Ms. Cook reviewed the parameters of the student program map at the high school and the value support programs has in place for the targeted student population. The renaming of the Mountain View Library in honor of former principal Mr. Frank Fishel was discussed and approved. The latest school digest update was reviewed by the Policy Committee, too. And then some discussions in private things, confidential things.
Any comments or questions from the board? Nope? Okay, seeing none, we will move on. And with that, let me just scroll back up, I will open the floor for any board subcommittees, our Parent Teacher Association liaison reports. Do we have anyone? Come on up.
Hi, how are you? Parla Hotcraft. Well, thank you so much. I'm with the MOHS Parents Club, and we wanted to let everyone know about the senior scholarships we'd given out in the spring. We gave out a number of scholarships this, and, sorry, the full list was $800 to Allison Bisser, I'm going to apologize in advance in case I get anyone's name wrong. $650 to Juliana Muscatello, $650 to Bonisha Divagiri. Six hundred and fifty dollars to Bonisha Divagiri. Four hundred and twenty-five dollars to Amblin Kobzaba. Four hundred dollars to Laura Thomas. Three hundred and fifty dollars to Sydney Fink. Three hundred dollars to Jacob Hamery. Two hundred and twenty-five dollars to Isabella Zafola. And two hundred dollars to Brandon Barris. We also give a five hundred dollar annual gift to each class. The way we fund all of these gifts, a lot of the things that we do for students over the school is concessions, and our first concession stand is this Saturday. We will be running concessions for the ROTC Bingo fundraiser, which is being held at the MOHS cafeteria. Doors will open at 5:00, and we are definitely hoping that everybody comes out.
Thank you so much. Any questions from the board? No? Thank you so much. Hi, Amy Asieh.
Hello, everyone. I'm Amy Marini. I'm one of the co-leaders for CPAG, this Special Education Parent Advisory Group. I'm really just reporting on CAC. So I did email you guys all the link again, but just as a refresher, because some of the stuff is really important stuff. And so CAC stands for the State Special Education Council. And it's at the state level that oversees CPAGs and stuff like that. Very important. Their first meeting was September, and that's the one that I kind of like sent out to you guys. But they also changed their format, and they're going to be meeting every single month this year. So the next is actually Thursday. So just as a quick thing, I had to actually print off because I was running late. The things that I wanted to make sure I brought up to your guys' attention is some of the stuff that they've reviewed was the Accountability and Quality Improvement indicators for the districts, one being that we are in Cohort 3, which the self-assessment is like now, and that then the monitoring will be next year, so '26, '27. Then they also provided the monitoring protocols and like the revised pieces for the districts. This stuff is clearly not my language, but I at least have some understanding of this tiny little piece of it. There was also the Indicator One pagers for all the things that they'll be monitoring, which was under the... there was like a whole QR code that I didn't know about, actually, that were on each one of those indicators for training opportunities for the staff, which I thought was really, really informative. Other things that were part of these Indicator One pager resources was different indicators for different programs that are within different districts. So the Emotional and Behavioral Program Quality Indicators, the Quality Indicators for Programs Serving Students with Disabilities, 18 to 21, ones that were servicing. The Autism Program Quality Indicators were all different things that they had updated last year that they reviewed, and I wanted to make sure that you guys had links to those. Then they reviewed some of the stuff that's available on the Office of Special Education's website, which is huge, not even just for parents, but staff and parents really becoming more educated. Free opportunities right at fingerprint... at the fingertips, like right on the website. They reviewed legislation, which we've talked about at CPAG. Talked about different opportunities that were conferences that were being shared. Those are all things. I'm not going to read them. Resource Fair, I think that may have just happened. But the big, 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 big thing, which falls into... CPAG's meeting is tomorrow night at 7:00, and we have Mike Morata from Tech Solutions coming to talk about assistive technology. But they had assistive technology from the TCNJ Assessment Technology Center come and do a whole presentation about what they offer, the free services that they provide, the YouTube channels that they provide, and all the supports that TCNJ does in providing for families and for the districts, really. It was really more district kind of opportunities with like free resources that are available out and about at TCNJ. What other things? And they talked about other stuff that makes my brain get a little bit crazy, because I don't understand it, about just more monitoring stuff and everything. So we do, like I said, have our... our next meeting is tomorrow. We are always virtual, and we... the second Tuesday of the month. Tomorrow's month meeting is a parent-only meeting, but if somebody wants to attend as a parent and not as a member of the board, or even, you know, then that's totally fine. And we do have someone coming to speak about assistive technology. November's meeting is for the district to provide. Last year, we did this as well, where the district does one month. We alternate, so it's parent-only, and then the district-led presentation about something that is specific to special services within the district. I'm not sure exactly what... I think they're nailing down what the topic's going to be. And then we're hoping to have some unified students come to speak about their experiences in December. So, yeah, that's it. And thank you for... I heard, because I was listening on the way in, I'm glad that you guys are looking at creative opportunities for paras.
Do we have any comments or questions from the board? No? I know Dr. Banjia is on top of that monitor and...
Yes, we are. Yep. Miss Arthur Dussman with State last week.
Great. All right. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And with that, do we have any other subcommittee reports? Anybody attend? Asieh, Beth?
I do. On behalf of the FPTA, they are doing a soft launch of a school store this month in addition to their annual trunk retreat, which is scheduled for this Friday. Please come support the 4th and 5th grade classes with Kona Ice, and the 4th grade class will be selling Ashley Farms cider, donuts, and hot chocolate.
And I saw an advertisement going out from Mountain View. They're looking for volunteers and more trunk...
More trunks needed.
All right. Perfect. So if anybody wants to pull up with their trunk open and decorated with goodies for the kids, did they contact the PTA for that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, you can shoot them an email.
Okay. Anyone else? Comments, questions? All right, I will close out the committee reports. I have nothing from my report. And with that, we will actually take a motion to go into confidential session. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Anyone second?
Second.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Be it resolved that the board meet in confidential session for the purpose of discussing negotiations, personnel matters of attorney-client privilege, pending or anticipated litigation, confidential pupil matters, real estate matters, be further resolved that the matters discussed in confidential session be disclosed to the public when the reason for confidentiality no longer exists. And we are in confidential session.
All right, I'll call us back into session and can we take a roll call please?
Mrs. Aquino here. Mrs. Fattin here. Mrs. Figuera here. Dr. Giordano here. Mrs. Melendez here. Mrs. Narcisse here. Mrs. O'Neil here. Mr. Orzillo here. And with that, I will open the floor up for public comments. Oh, did we get everyone Miss Shonan?
Yes.
Okay. I'll open the floor up for public comments on action items. Members of the community may comment on any action item prior to board discussion. Please state your name and address for the record. All comments must be respectfully presented. Abusive and obscene comments will not be tolerated and the mic is open. Going once, going twice. All right, we will close out public comments on action items. And with that, I will take a motion to move all agenda items from 7.1 down to 2. And we are at 11.5. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Oh, look at that. And do we have any comments or questions from the board? No, I just want to say congratulations, Ms. Margozziak.
Yes.
And welcome to our interim supervisor of science. And with that, any other comments or questions? Nope? Okay, we'll take a roll call then, Miss Shonan.
Dr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mrs. Aquino?
Yes.
Mrs. Fattin?
Here.
Mrs. Figuera?
Here.
Dr. Giordano?
Here.
Mrs. Melendez?
Here.
Mrs. Narcisse?
Here.
Mrs. O'Neil?
Here.
Mr. Orzillo?
Here.
And with that, I will open the floor up for public comments. Oh, did we get everyone Miss Shonan?
Yes.
Okay. I'll open the floor up for public comments on action items. Members of the community may comment on any action item prior to board discussion. Please state your name and address for the record. All comments must be respectfully presented. Abusive and obscene comments will not be tolerated and the mic is open. Going once, going twice. All right, we will close out public comments on action items. And with that, I will take a motion to move all agenda items from 7.1 down to 2. And we are at 11.5. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Oh, look at that. And do we have any comments or questions from the board? No, I just want to say congratulations, Ms. Margozziak.
Yes.
And welcome to our interim supervisor of science. And with that, any other comments or questions? Nope? Okay, we'll take a roll call then, Miss Shonan.
Dr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mrs. Aquino?
Yes.
Mrs. Fattin?
Here.
Mrs. Figuera?
Here.
Dr. Giordano?
Here.
Mrs. Melendez?
Here.
Mrs. Narcisse?
Here.
Mrs. O'Neil?
Here.
Mr. Orzillo?
Here.
And with that, I will open the floor up for public comments. Oh, did we get everyone Miss Shonan?
Yes.
Okay. I'll open the floor up for public comments on action items. Members of the community may comment on any action item prior to board discussion. Please state your name and address for the record. All comments must be respectfully presented. Abusive and obscene comments will not be tolerated and the mic is open. Going once, going twice. All right, we will close out public comments on action items. And with that, I will take a motion to move all agenda items from 7.1 down to 2. And we are at 11.5. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Oh, look at that. And do we have any comments or questions from the board? No, I just want to say congratulations, Ms. Margozziak.
Yes.
And welcome to our interim supervisor of science. And with that, any other comments or questions? Nope? Okay, we'll take a roll call then, Miss Shonan.
Dr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mrs. Aquino?
Yes.
Mrs. Fattin?
Here.
Mrs. Figuera?
Here.
Dr. Giordano?
Here.
Mrs. Melendez?
Here.
Mrs. Narcisse?
Here.
Mrs. O'Neil?
Here.
Mr. Orzillo?
Here.
And with that, I will open the floor up for public comments. Oh, did we get everyone Miss Shonan?
Yes.
Okay. I'll open the floor up for public comments on action items. Members of the community may comment on any action item prior to board discussion. Please state your name and address for the record. All comments must be respectfully presented. Abusive and obscene comments will not be tolerated and the mic is open. Going once, going twice. All right, we will close out public comments on action items. And with that, I will take a motion to move all agenda items from 7.1 down to 2. And we are at 11.5. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Oh, look at that. And do we have any comments or questions from the board? No, I just want to say congratulations, Ms. Margozziak.
Yes.
And welcome to our interim supervisor of science. And with that, any other comments or questions? Nope? Okay, we'll take a roll call then, Miss Shonan.
Dr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mrs. Aquino?
Yes.
Mrs. Fattin?
Yes.
Mrs. Figuera?
Yes.
Mrs. Melendez?
Yes.
Mrs. Narcisse?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Neil?
I abstain from anything for Christian Humphrey and for Specialit.
Mr. Orzillo?
Yes.
All right, with that, we will open public comments. Students, parents, employees, and community members may comment on any item of interest pertaining to the Mount Olive School District. Please state your name and address for the record. All comments must be respectfully presented. Abusive or obscene comments will not be tolerated and the mic is open.
Hello, everybody. I am Lisa Lamendola and I live at 498 Sand Shore Road in Bud Lake, New Jersey. We just wanted to let you know on behalf of EMO, which for those of you that don't know is the Education Association of Mount Olive. We represent the majority of the faculty and staff in Mount Olive schools. And one of our goals this year was to become more involved with community events. And so we wanted you to be aware that we've started to have a larger presence out in the community. We've partnered a lot with the rec department and we recently participated in Mount Olive Day. They had that big parade. It was very loud. But we had a booth and we had games for adults and kids and giveaways. And this past weekend, although it was cut short, we also participated in Oktoberfest and we gave away pumpkins to families. So they got to do that. I do want to give credit to our EMO pep and fast grant chair, Malani Lightzel. We kind of gave her some ideas of things we wanted to do this year and she's off and running. There's a lot of good things coming our way. But next on the list is we are also supporting all of the trunk or treats at the elementary schools. So you'll be able to see the staff participating in some of those events as well. So we just wanted to let you know. I'll keep coming and giving you some updates there. But we know that both the district, the district is also trying to make some bridges with the community and we're helping to support in that way. So thank you.
Thank you so much.
Mrs. Lamendola, where did you get that sweatshirt?
Oh, I got this from Limitless. It's a Sand Shore mom.
Oh, okay.
She lives over on Innes Spring. You can go to limitless.com and you can get your shiny marauders.
Thank you.
For those at home, it's glitter marauders. And any other? Oh, okay, we got more. I know, oh, the sun got really hot.
I know. It's hot. I'm hot.
That's because my, the amount of heat I generate being fat.
Hold on. Name, name and address.
My name is Martin Wells Muller, 25 Wilkes Avenue, Bud Lake, New Jersey. I want to say I was very proud of the school district for doing that strategic planning going forward. As you know, for years I've been talking about what we can do to plan for the next generation going in our school district because it does matter to me. I am now the vice president of the Mount Republican Club and last time you had a hard time with a lot of Republicans with the last, I guess, thing about expanding and trying to go out for a vote. I'm telling you, like with me working with you guys and helping you guys, I'm hoping that when the next referendum comes out, we'll be able to deliver that to the town and understand why we're doing this for the kids and for the staff and for the future needs going forward. Because like I said, Rome wasn't built in a day and it wasn't shortened day. And as they say, it takes a village to raise a child. So like I said, we just got to get everyone behind the future of Mount Olive. As you know, a lot of school districts are selling schools off now. And we have a problem in our town that we're expanding. And with the Highland Act coming here in town, that's only going to progressively make things worse for us in the next several years. And I don't like ever putting kids in Porter schools, mobile schools on the outside. Because when I went to school back in the day, that was either smart, the bad kids or the disabled kids did all that in the trailers. And I'd like every kid to be in the same building as everyone else. So like I said, let's go for Mount Olive and even though I have no kids left in the school district, I'm still here. All right, man, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Also, the chairs are okay.
Can we have anyone else for the mic? Going once, going twice. All right, we're going to close out public comments then. And we'll move to old business. Members of the board may comment on any old business. Anyone? Nope, seeing none. We'll move to new business. Members of the board may introduce any new topic. None?
I might have a new topic. I had a thought in my mind about, I saw that they're offering a grant to do bell to bell, no phones. I actually love that idea and I'll tell you, I'm sure that it might be a little hard at first, but I, the one thing that really bothers me about the cell phones is psychological misdevelopment of their brains from being tagged all the time in Instagram and stuff like that. And it actually, they've proven that you lose concentration, you have anxiety, you get depression. And I think we should seriously consider doing that. I know nobody, nobody's going to like it, but for the health and wellness of our students, I think it is such an important thing and I'd really, really like this board to seriously consider moving on to that. We've done a very good job, but I think we could do better.
Agreed. I think we're doing that.
Yeah, so the class.
We're not bell to bell. It's, bell to bell is.
So each class in the middle school, they don't.
In the morning, you lock them up and in the afternoon, you, you unlock them.
So at the moment, we have at the middle school that for all morning until lunch, the students have them locked in their lockers and then they can't, they return them.
Well, they have them locked in their lockers. All right, that's, it's accessible. Locked in there.
And then at the high school, each classroom has the pouches that their phones are put into. And I know that we are exploring the phone grant that was forwarded to Miss Shonan, right? One of the phone, the phone grant.
So I will say this about that. That, that grant is for those yonder pouches. That's one of the main things.
For the younger kids?
Yes.
But we already have no phones in the school for the younger age groups.
Yes. And so when we talk about the middle school, they are expected to put them in their locker. And when their student out with the phone, it is very telltale. It's very, it's very.
This is where I'm going to argue that, okay? Because what time is lunch?
But they, they don't take them out at lunchtime.
What time is lunch?
Yeah, they have their phone during, they have their tag at lunch.
These children are thinking about, all right, if I go to the bathroom and it takes me one minute to go to the bathroom, then maybe I could sneak to my locker and I could grab my phone. And this is what they're thinking of instead of their math or their algebra or anything. I really do believe we should, I, I saw these pouches that magnetically unlock. Have you seen them?
That's the, the yonder pouches.
Is that the, I think those are fabulous. They have, they, they can't even think about even looking at their phone in that case.
So I will tell you this, when schools have that, kids have dummy phones and they put their dummy phones in the yonder pack. And so I'm certainly willing to explore it. Listen, they're, they're ahead of us. But I will, I will say this. I, I think the district has, the district has done the heavy lift of having those conversations and about emphasizing responsible use of it. That's why in the elementary, there is no phone, there's no watch, there's nothing.
And that's wonderful. I'm not saying we're not doing a wonderful job.
So but I think, I think this grant brings up the need for continued conversation, right? And continue, and it's also to understand this is a joint venture between home and school.
Yes.
Agreed.
And I think that is very.
All right, I'll call us back into session and can we take a roll call please?
Mrs. Aquino?
Here.
Mrs. Fenton?
Here.
Mrs. Figuera?
Here.
Dr. Giordano?
Here.
Mrs. Melendez?
Here.
Mrs. Narcisse?
Here.
Mrs. O'Neil?
Here.
Mr. Orzillo?
Here.
And with that, I will open the floor up for public comments. Oh, did we get everyone Ms. Schonin?
Yes.
Okay. I'll open the floor up for public comments on action items. Members of the community may comment on any action item. Prior to board discussion, please state your name and address for the record. All comments must be respectfully presented. Abusive and obscene comments will not be tolerated and the mic is open. Going once, going twice. All right, we will close out public comments on action items. And with that, I will take a motion to move all agenda items from 7.1 down to and we are at 11.5. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Oh, look at that. And do we have any comments or questions from the board? No, I just want to say congratulations, Ms. Margozziak. And welcome to our interim supervisor of science. And with that, any other comments or questions? Nope? Okay, we'll take a roll call then, Ms. Schonin.
Dr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mrs. Aquino?
Yes.
Mrs. Fenton?
Yes.
Mrs. Figuera?
Yes.
Mrs. Melendez?
Yes.
Mrs. Narcisse?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Neil?
I abstain from anything for Christian Humphrey and for Specialit.
Mr. Orzillo?
Yes.
All right, with that, we will open public comments. Students, parents, employees, and community members may comment on any item of interest. Pertaining to the Mount Olive School District, please state your name and address for the record. All comments must be respectfully presented. Abusive or obscene comments will not be tolerated and the mic is open.
Hello, everybody. I am Lisa Lamendola and I live at 498 Sand Shore Road in Bud Lake, New Jersey. We just wanted to let you know on behalf of EMO, which for those of you that don't know is the Education Association of Mount Olive, we represent the majority of the faculty and staff in Mount Olive schools. And one of our goals this year was to become more involved with community events. And so we wanted you to be aware that we've started to have a larger presence out in the community. We've partnered a lot with the rec department and we recently participated in Mount Olive Day. They had that big parade. It was very loud. But we had a booth and we had games for adults and kids and giveaways. And this past weekend, although it was cut short, we also participated in Oktoberfest and we gave away pumpkins to families. So they got to do that. I do want to give credit to our EMO pep and fast grant chair, Malani Lightzel. We kind of gave her some ideas of things we wanted to do this year and she's off and running. There's a lot of good things coming our way. But next on the list is we are also supporting all of the trunk or treats at the elementary schools. So you'll be able to see the staff participating in some of those events as well. So we just wanted to let you know. I'll keep coming and giving you some updates there. But we know that both the district, the district is also trying to make some bridges with the community and we're helping to support in that way. So thank you.
Thank you so much.
Mrs. Lamendola, where did you get that sweatshirt?
Oh, I got this from Limitless. It's a Sand Shore mom.
Oh, okay.
She's been running in the spring. You can go to Limitless.com and you can get your shiny marauders.
Thank you.
For those at home, it's glitter marauders. And any other? Oh, okay, we got more. I know, the sun got really hot.
I know.
That's because my amount of heat I generate.
Hold on, name, name and address.
My name is Martin Wells-Muller, 25 Woodcrest Avenue, Bud Lake, New Jersey. I want to say I was very proud of the school district for doing that strategic planning going forward. As you know, for years I've been talking about what we can do to plan for the next generation going in our school district because it does matter to me. I am now the vice president of the Mount Republican Club. And like last time, you had a hard time with a lot of Republicans with the last, I guess, thing about expansion and trying to go out for a vote. I'm telling you, like with me working with you guys and helping you guys, I'm hoping that when the next referendum comes out, we'll be able to deliver that to the town and they'll understand why we're doing this for the kids and for the staff and for the future needs going forward. Because like I said, Rome wasn't built in a day and it wasn't a shortened day. And as they say, it takes a village to raise a child. So like I said, we just got to get everyone behind the future of Mount Olive. As you know, a lot of school districts are selling schools off now. And we have a problem in our town that we're expanding. And with the Highland Act coming here in town, that's only going to progressively make things worse for us in the next several years. And I don't like ever putting kids in Porter schools, mobile schools on the outside. Because when I went to school back in the day, that was either the smart, the bad kids or the disabled kids did all that in the trailers. And I'd like every kid to be in the same building as everyone else. So like I said, let's go for Mount Olive and even though I have no kids left in the school district, I'm still here. All right, then, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Also, the chairs are okay.
Can we have anyone else for the mic? Going once, going twice. All right, we're going to close out public comments then and we'll move to old business. Members of the board may comment on any old business. Anyone? Nope, seeing none, we'll move to new business. Members of board may introduce any new topic.
I might have a new topic. I had a thought in my mind about, I saw that they're offering a grant to do bell-to-bell no phones. I actually love that idea and I'll tell you, I'm sure that it might be a little hard at first, but I, the one thing that really bothers me about the cell phones is psychological misdevelopment of their brains from being tagged all the time in Instagram and stuff like that. And it actually, they've proven that you lose concentration, you have anxiety, you get depression. And I think we should seriously consider doing that. I know nobody, nobody's going to like it, but for the health and wellness of our students, I think it is such an important thing and I'd really, really like this board to seriously consider moving on to that. We've done a very good job, but I think we could do better.
Agreed.
I think we're doing that.
Yes, so the class.
We're not bell-to-bell. It's, bell-to-bell is.
So each class in the middle school they don't.
In the morning, you lock them up and afternoon, you unlock them.
So at the moment, we have at the middle school that for all morning until lunch, the students have them locked in their lockers and then they can't.
Well, they have them locked in their lockers. All right, that's, it's accessible.
And then at the high school, each classroom has the pouches that their phones are put into. And I know that we are exploring the phone grant that was forwarded to Ms. Schonin, right? One of the phone, the phone grant.
So I will say this about that, that grant is for those yonder pouches. That's one of the main things.
For the younger kids?
Yes.
But we already have no phones in the school for the younger age groups.
Yes. And so when we talk about the middle school, they are expected to put them in their locker. And when there's a student out with a phone, it is very telltale. It's very, it's very.
This is where I'm going to argue that, okay? Because what time is lunch?
But they, they don't take them out at lunchtime.
What time is lunch?
Yeah, they have their phone during, the drawing tag at lunch.
These children are thinking about, all right, if I go to the bathroom and it takes me one minute to go to the bathroom, then maybe I could sneak to my locker and I could grab my phone. And this is what they're thinking of instead of their math or their algebra or their anything. I really do believe we should, I saw these pouches that magnetically unlock. Have you seen them?
That's the yonder pouches.
Is that the, I think those are fabulous. They have, they, they can't even think about even looking at their phone in that case.
So I will tell you this, when schools have that, kids have dummy phones and they put their dummy phones in the yonder pack. And so I'm certainly willing to explore it. Listen, they're ahead of us. But I will, I will say this. I think the district has, the district has done the heavy lift of having those conversations and about emphasizing responsible use of it. That's why in the elementary, there is no phone, there's no watch, there's nothing.
And it's wonderful. I'm not saying we're not doing a wonderful job.
So but I think, I think this grant brings up the need for continued conversation, right? And it's also to understand, this is a joint venture between home and school. Yes. And I think that is very critical, that as a school district, we are very focused upon the learning and that we, at the same time, recognizing the responsibilities that families do have and as they get older. But it also takes, when there are instances in which a student gets caught with someone where they don't have a phone, when they get called home, that there is a support system there between home and school. But certainly we can engage, continue conversation because we did, I did have a conversation with the middle school and high school administration last week about that very grant. And we talked about our practices and, you know, this is an ongoing conversation. Those, the yonder packs, there's things you have to look at. The way that you have those, you have to have different locations in the school to open them up and it turns into a whole different things get around. But certainly I appreciate the sentiment. We are certainly keen on understanding the developmental appropriateness of a phone. And when I, because I want to meet with kids, they too, at the high school especially, they're like, listen, Dr. Banji, we get it why we can't, we have to have our phones in the pouches. That's, that's a no-brainer. And I think, but those, but at the same time, I do understand what you're saying because just having the phone over there.
Yeah.
It still is distracting, right? And what's the right answer? Because.
I'm not saying there is a right answer.
But you bring up a good conversation that we need to continue to have just because at the same time, if we're going to put them in yonder pouches in the high school and they go off.
Yes.
But those, when they get to college, they also have to learn to have it on them. So it's not distracted to them. So it's one of those, it's a great topic though.
I just really think that it's actually more of an addiction now.
Yes.
And I'm just hoping that maybe like what we can do in the younger years can actually aid in that not addiction part of it, that's all.
Dr. Giordano, you have question?
Thank you, Madam President. I would just, Dr. Banji, I was just, a suggestion or thought came to my head. Why don't we wait, you talk to the middle school principal and the high school like you have been, maybe have them present to the policy committee in December and the policy committee can, we can have those ongoing discussions and update the board that way. I think, I agree with you, Ms. Fenton. At some point though, I mean, you're right, it's an addiction. So, you know, if I'm addicted to drugs and you take them away from me, it's going to be a shock to my system. I think this is the best way to do this and see where we get our data, how we're doing with it now. And then if we can go that full if we have to. But again, I would only do it if the schools want to do it. It's going to, it's a tremendous burden on the administrators and our teaching staff now.
It is.
What happens if the phone breaks? The parents are going to blame us now. It's going to become a hole. There's other things we got to think about. So I think, I think it's worth a discussion, but I think we need the data first of what we're doing now.
No, I totally agree with you, Dr. Giordano.
Okay, we're putting it into policy, Dr. Giordano. All right, any other comments for new business? All right, seeing none, we're going to move to board administration comments. Any members of the board may comment on any item pertaining to the school district. We'll just start at the end like usual. Dr. Giordano.
No comment, Madam President.
Mrs. Melendez?
No comment.
Mrs. Aquino?
Miss Fenton?
No comment.
All right, I have nothing for today. And Mr. Orzillo?
No comment.
And Ms. Figuera?
I'm going to break the cycle here. I want to give a shout out to the Flanders PTA because they won the New Jersey PTA Family Engagement Award from NJPETA for a family book club that we did last spring.
Congratulations. All right, and Mrs. O'Neil?
No comment.
No comment? Dr. Banji?
I'm good, thank you.
Everyone's good? All right, with that, I will take a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
A second, others in favor?